It's kind of crazy. Mike, I should show you the. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty three. I'll call the meeting to order and we have four major items tonight for discussion, first of which is a United Way of Pierce County presentation, and we're pleased to have the President Donna Puna Pinto with us tonight to give us an overview of all the great things United Way is doing in the community. Laura's yours. Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you. It's good to be here. It's been a long time.
Yeah, too long, pre-COVID, I think.
Very. In fact, I was thinking as I was driving over here, the last time I was here in person was another, it was a snowy, it was the day that it snowed. And I remember that Lakewood had the streets cleared. I do remember that. So I'm going to give you an overview of all the things that we've been been up to. It's been an incredibly busy time for United Way, but in the midst of it all, we turned one hundred. So we, in two thousand and twenty one, we turned one hundred. And so just at the beginning of the PowerPoint, I have just some old photos of our.
You're wearing it well, Donna. You're wearing it well.
Yeah. I know, we don't look a day over ninety nine. We're, and we're still around and we want to be around for another hundred, hundred years. But we have been celebrating since May of two thousand and twenty one as well. We're also in the midst of a centennial campaign. It is an eight million dollar campaign, and right now we're at six point, as of today, we're at six point two million dollars, which, when you think about it, we started this campaign during a pandemic. And it's, we've raised pretty much all of these resources for, you know, do some virtual discussions with generous donors in the community. So just some, these numbers are what we invested in the community to date, over six million into the community in two thousand and twenty one. Three hundred and fifty million back into Pierce County over a hundred years. And we have, which I have on the next slide, is our goal of lifting fifteen thousand households out of poverty by two thousand and twenty one. And since two thousand and seventeen, we sixty three hundred individuals and families have moved from a place of crisis towards self sufficiency. And the other thing that I like to make note of is a hundred percent of every dollar donated goes back into Pierce County. So it, in some way, all, everything that we raise goes back into the community. And this year's theme, you know, we've been talking about poverty reduction for a while now. And we focus on the Alice families, the asset limited income constrained employed. And really wanting to continue to think about how do we tackle poverty at its roots, because we feel that one in three families is too many. And here in Pierce County, one in three families is Alice. So I mentioned, you know, our bold goal. And the one in three households, you know, and again, when you think about the Alice families, and I also think about the impact of the Alice families during COVID. It's, it was those individuals that, you know, were out there working that they couldn't, not all of them could stay home. They had, you know, they work in grocery stores or other, or hospital settings or other places where they needed to be physically there. And so there was issues of childcare, which, you know, is still one of the biggest expenses when it comes to a how family's household income. And so, so, you know, so the lack of childcare, ballooning debt, food and housing insecurity, all of those things have impacted the Alice families. And especially so over during COVID. So our work, and my, I had my staff put this together because when I think about the work that United Way does in Pierce County, it's really in five ways that we're tackling poverty. You know, we used to just talk about the programmatic piece of it, but I wanted us to really think broadly in terms of how it, how it actually happens. And so, you know, the, the three of the ways that we do it, that most people are most familiar with is basic needs, getting, you know, resources out into the community. And this last year in two thousand and twenty one, our two thousand and twenty two annual report won't come out until April or May of this year, but a hundred and forty three thousand individuals were helped last year. Or in two thousand and twenty one, as a result of the resources that we were able to put out into the community for basic needs. South Sound two one one, I think everyone's familiar with two one one. Two one one is our information and referral call center, connecting people to resources out in the community. Over eighty thousand contacts were made. And what I think is unique about our two one one, there are seven in the, eight in the state. Ours is one of the larger ones. We cover Pierce Thurston and Lewis Counties. But in addition to having just the call specialists, we also have what's called navigators. And these individuals spend more time with someone on the phone. So it's not, you know, a couple of minutes where they're giving names of different locations that a person can connect with, but we have navigators around housing. So they work with the organizations in the community that provide housing, shelter assistance, and getting them connected to those services and doing more of a warm handoff as opposed to, here's the name of a shelter in your area, or here's some housing information. We also have transportation. We have a, a relationship with United Way Worldwide and Lyft, where during the pandemic, we were able to expand our reach through more cities throughout the county, and we still are able to do it. We're actually getting some additional dollars, but someone can call into United Way. And we can, we have access to the Lyft server. So we're able to set it up where the person doesn't have to worry about having any kind of voucher or anything like that. United Way takes care of getting them to a doctor's appointment or to work. You know, to the grocery store. There's several, there's a list of places that the Lyft's ride, rides can take them, but it handles that. So that's just an example. Workforce Central, we work with them. We have a navigator that focuses on workforce development. And then a parent resource navigator as well. Our, and so these are the single care, you know, we don't talk a lot about this single care, but single care used to be family wise, and it's a discount prescription program. The family that started this get connected with United Way Worldwide probably thirty years ago or more. And even if you have insurance, you can use this card and get discounts on, on prescriptions. Most, you know, everyone from CVS, Walgreens, Savon will take those cards. And then our Centers for Strong Families, which I believe the last time I was here in person, I spoke with you about our Centers for Strong Families. It's a network of trusted community organizations. Clover Park Technical College is one of the locations. We are working with Goodwill. And they provide the employment and financial coaches. They imply, I'm sorry, they, they provide the financial coaches at Clover Park Technical College. But our Centers for Strong Families is a wealth building model that's focused on how you help individuals earn it and keep it, earn it, keep it, and grow their income. Three legs and stool. It involves financial coaching, employment, income support. So are people leaving money on the table, be it public or private dollars? A lot of individuals that are working oftentimes don't take care, take advantage of the, their employer's benefits. So it's really helping someone see what, what are you leaving on the table that you can access? And then job training and employment, because one of the things with Centers for Strong Families, we know that a job is not enough. You can have a job, but how are you utilizing your resources? How are you taking advantage of those things that are out there for you to access as well? So I think this next slide just kind of give you, gives you an overall overview of the work that we did back in two thousand and twenty one. Some of the things I would point out is the average increase in short term saving around Centers for Strong Families, five thousand dollars. What we've also seen with our Centers for Strong Families is an average monthly income increase of about two thousand dollars a month. And so when you're talking about a family that's struggling every day, working sometimes, well, most of them, I would say, are working definitely more than one job. Especially if they're a single family household, you know, that, having that additional resources is significant for that, for those families. The other part of our work is around partnerships and advocacy. You know, we've got the three areas that I just talked about, but in order to provide those, the, the impact in those areas, we need advocate, to focus on advocacy, and we need our community partnerships. And so with our community partnerships, advocacy, you know, we advocate on behalf of children and families. We go down to Olympia every year. We make sure that all legislators in, you know, Pierce County know what, not only what we're doing, but what we care about, and also in hopes of lining up with what they care about. And we were down there early February, providing information. And we support other nonprofit organizations to, with their advocacy effort. Because we're all in this together when it comes to making sure families have what they need to take care of themselves and their families and to and to lead a healthy, happy life. So advocacy is one. And then the other, some of our key partnerships, we have our growing guaranteed income initiative, it's Growing Resilience in Tacoma, that was a partnership with the city of Tacoma. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Our Hunger Free Pierce County, where we're working with all of the key organizations that are focused on food insecurity. And, you know, what is United Way's role in dealing with food insecurity? A lot of the things that we do right now are more of on ramps to get people engaged in volunteer activities. So we do a summer reading program that, where we go into apartment complexes and other places and provide students with books and snack packs. We also work with organizations to provide funding where they can put, where we put together and they provide the weekend packs. So kids come in on Friday and they can get some food for the weekend. There's also, I mentioned the Ride United, our Work First Partnership. So all of those things, we couldn't do any of the work that we do with, without some of those key partners. You know, we also work with, you know, the county as well as, as the cities. United Way is a part of the South Sound Military and Community Partnership. You know, I've been chairing that committee, I think, since I arrived. And it's been, it's been nine years. I've been here nine years. So I have been chairing the Social Services Committee and working with Bill and Maria on that. And then just to tell you a little bit about, great, I don't know how familiar you are with this, but we, this is, this is a partnership with the city of Tacoma, but it's also a partnership with the Mayors for Guaranteed Income out of Stockton, California, and the University of Pennsylvania, their Center for Guaranteed Income Research. And we got involved in this back, I believe it was right in the middle of the pen, before the pandemic hit. So we joined the city in this effort and really saw this as an extenuate, an extension of work that United Way was already doing when it came to looking at how do you dismantle poverty in communities. And so we said yes, we were the administrators of the effort. The first payment to a hundred and ten families was distributed in twenty, December of two thousand and twenty one. And it ended in two thousand and twenty two. And, and it was a hundred and ten families, five hundred dollars a month for twelve months. And we did, it was unconditional, no strings attached, and we targeted Alice families. So we targeted families that were working. You know, they were working, in fact, from the ones that were the storytellers, several of them were working more than one job. And what we found is that working more than one job, if they made a dollar more, if they made twenty two dollars more, that kicked them off of benefits. So if they were, if they were getting benefits for childcare or benefits, one woman, I think it impacted her benefits for her grandson who had a disability. So all of these things, we are, are things that we look at when it comes to advocating for families. But it was meant to be a supplement and not a replacement for work, and it was really to showcase that poverty is not a personal failure, but it's really a structural and a systems failure. Because so many of the, the programs and policies out there are just, really are more disincentives for work. Because if you work more and you make more, you lose those very things that are helping you. And so while this targeted Tacoma and four zip codes in Tacoma, you know, one of the things, the bill died on the floor. Representative Barry, I believe, well, she did, I believe she did, put a bill on the floor for guaranteed income across the state. And that, it did, didn't make it. It got out of committee, died on the floor. So we are looking at, at United Way, what are ways that we could do this type of a program throughout the county? Maybe not to the degree that we were able to. We raised a lot of private dollars, so there was no public dollars used in the actual five, the money that was given to the recipients. But, you know, are there things that we can do? Because we know that a little bit of a cash assistance helps people, you know, get a chance to breathe. You know, they didn't have to worry as much. They could put, make sure food was on the table. They could get a better job. We heard several stories about people saying, you know what, hey, I can take off from work and work on getting a better job. So there's elements of this program that we think we can use to build it across more cities in Pierce County. So the volunteering, I, you know, I've mentioned some of those, you know, the volunteers, we have things throughout the year with either putting together hygiene kits around Martin Luther King Junior Day this past year, or everything but the turkey, where we collect food and then we work with EFN to get the food back out to various food banks in, in the county. So that is, those are the events. And I think that's it. So that's just a quick overview of what's going on with United Way and didn't know if you have any questions.
Sure, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. I think one of your earlier slides said that, one of your earlier slides said that two thousand and twenty one, there was six million dollars distributor. Was any of that COVID money, either CARES Act or ARPA money?
No, the, it wasn't the, not of the six million. We did indirectly get some of the ARPA dollars through the county for our Center for Strong Family, the Bonnie Lake site. But that was, this is, what is this, twenty, that would have been in two thousand and twenty two. We received those, so it, it's, it's not going directly to United Way, it's going directly to the agency to, to, for the Center for Strong Family. We did get some, some ARPA dollars through the city of Tacoma for the four Center for Strong Families in Tacoma, but I believe that was a two thousand and twenty two.
Okay, so maybe the answer is just a simple note of this. Do you have any FTEs that are funded by ARPA money that will be displaced by the end of the funding?
Uh, no.
So I've watched, I'm old enough, I'm really old, I've watched United Way change from a fundraising organization to a seemingly wide ranging social service agency. I have two questions in that regard, or two basic inquiries. One, one is what's the focus as a social service agency? I can't, I don't really see a pattern. I've seen, you know, the first five fundamentals was one of the earlier ones. There seems to be some emphasis on children. What's the, what's the focus in your mission statement?
So our, our focus, United Way has never been a direct service provider, and we, we won't be. Our two on one is an information referral and probably isn't a great area, but our work is convened, we're conveners, collaborators, coordinators. And our focus is to lift fifteen thousand households out of poverty by two thousand and twenty eight. We have a cause. Our cause statement is to bring the community together, unite the community to end poverty one family at a time. So all of our work is under that umbrella. We do it in three ways, the basic needs, the two on one, and the financial stability piece, which is our Centers for Strong Families. When I, we no longer, while children are in the center, you know, everyone wants, you know, kids to grow up and be healthy and happy and, and productive. What we found is the community was saying, families need opportunities. And so, yes, the first five fundamentals, United Way started that. They spun off into their own nonprofit. They're still in our building. We still pay their rent. We still support them. We still advocate on their behalf, but there are a lot of people doing things with young children, and United Way was simply funding. You know, fundraising organization, I think it's an and, you know, we used to, fundraising was the vehicle by which we did our work. United Way, when it was started, it was started as an organization that was all about, you know, there are organizations in our community, there are people in our community that need help, and we need to figure out how we bring people together to make that happen. And so fundraising became the, the way in which we, they do that, but also bringing people together. So, you know, we still need to raise money for our work. But we're, our mission is about mobilizing the caring power of this county to address the issues that people care about in measurable and lasting ways. So it's all about how you change conditions in communities.
So aside from two one one, what unique services do you provide to county?
Keep in mind, we don't provide direct services. What we do is we invest in basic needs. So we have about twenty one organizations that are getting resources from us, and we put them into cohorts and work with them in order, in order to be able to track and tell how are they helping their clients move from crisis to self sufficiency and beyond. And then our Centers for Strong Families, we are the intermediary for a network of seven organizations, Goodwill, Clover Park, Sound Outreach, and then two school districts, Bethel, Bethel School District, Sumner Bonnie Lake, Tacoma Housing Authority, and Tacoma Community House. And so as the intermediary, what we provide are resources. We provide access to a day, a very complex data system in which we need to collect data. We are part of a national effort. So a lot of things that we're, what, this is one thing that we're involved in that I'm pretty proud of. We are a part of over a hundred financial opportunity centers across the country. So we have access to the software, we have access to national funding. We also provide technical assistance and training and certificate, additional certifications for trainers. So we're the intermediate for intermediary for that. We don't provide the services.
Okay, so you mentioned guaranteed income. So State of Washington has record revenues and the legislature's out of money. Where's the money going to come from? It's one thing to advocate for what could be the most expensive program in the history of the state, aside from highways. It's another thing to pay for it. Is there a funding proposal that goes along with that advocacy?
Yeah, exactly. That's why it died on the floor. Yeah, there wasn't, I don't think, you know, two hundred and forty million, I think is what it was. Be, to be honest with you, we, United Way, we were concerned about, you know, whether or not something like that would, would pass. One of the things that we talk about, and one of the things that I've brought up in, in several conversations, is that there are a lot of programs already out there that give money to, you know, support families, temporary assistance for needy families, for instance. However, so many of those programs have, have so many strings tied to them. And, you know, I always say, could you look at how those, those resources are distributed to families? And could they be distributed in a way that gave a little bit more flexibility to families, because those resources are there. So I don't know if anyone is seriously thinking about that, but that's something that at United Way, we look at. We know that, you know, we were fortunate enough to be able to raise the money to do this demonstration, which was really all about collecting research to build a case for something, something like this nationally. So it's being done in Alaska. It's been done in Alaska for, for, I don't know, the last thirty years or so. Alaska's had a guaranteed income.
Alaska has oil fields they take the money out of. That's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, I, I don't know where they get the money from, but I just know that they've been doing it. And we, and they, we know that in other countries, they have actually guaranteed incomes for everyone. Getting a certain, that every family get a certain income level. So we, we know that these, these efforts, I mean, take for instance, COVID. You know, everybody got, you know, just about everyone received a stimulus, at least the first time around. And so we know that that lifted, that lifted families up, you know, that helped them take care of themselves, the childcare tax credits, you know, lifted millions of children out of poverty. So, you know, these things do, do work, but I agree. I don't, the, the two hundred and forty million, yeah, we were questioning where that was going to come from as well.
Yeah, because it's probably like, more like twenty four billion, if you take and give five hundred dollars a month to every family who doesn't pay federal income tax. It's a huge number. So, thank you.
Mr. Brand Center?
Thanks, Eric. Thank you for, thank you for being here. I know, it, it's, it's been a while. I guess that we'll have to schedule you next time to come in the summer. Be able to go and do that. And, and you, there are some things in your presentation that were informative to me that I, that I didn't really know, and that I just wanted to, so, so the GRIT program was, was, was a one year demonstration project, and so it's, it's over. But who and what is in place to actually track to these particular families for the next three to however many years to see whether this is a is, is, is it something that made a change that the families themselves then were able to sustain themselves in, on a, on a pathway of getting stronger and stronger? The word, is, is United Way playing a role or requiring someone to, to do that?
Great question. Yes, we were part of the Mayors for Guaranteed Income, so we're part of this national effort. There's about a There's about 100 cities across the country that are engaged in some type of a guaranteed income effort. Uh, we're, uh, the Center for, um, Guaranteed Income Research out of the University of Pennsylvania is the research arm of this effort. So they are, uh, collecting all the information. They did a spending report as well. Um, so we do know at least an initial, initially how resources were spent. Um, they are gonna be collecting information over this next year. We'll get a report, we'll get the final report in April, I think of 2024. Um, but that will give us a, a better sense of, okay, so, you know, how did people, you know, cha, you know, what were the changes? We know from this, the, the five, because I don't know who those 110 are, the only people that know are the researchers and one staff person on my team that worked with the families. Um, but what we do know is that there are five, there were five storytellers. And from the, the stories that they were telling us and from what, uh, we were hearing from the other participants is that, um, they were, uh, you know, they weren't abusing the resources. They didn't quit their job for $6,000 a year. They, it was actually an incentive for them to say, okay, I've got, you know, this additional income right now. They knew it was a limited time. How can I, you know, what do I need to do to get myself on a, on the, you know, uh, the right path? Uh, so we'll know more in a year. Uh, but we do know as far as spending, it was spent on basic needs. It wa, it was spent on food and clothing, um, not clothing, I'm sorry, food and shelter, uh, childcare, uh, tutoring, uh, one family uses it for tutoring, uh, for their child. Um, you know, this is all about, you know, how a guaranteed income improves, you know, not only someone's economics as standing, but also their mental health, their wellbeing, all of those things.
Well, uh, you know, you know, I, I, I do, I shared Councilmember Anderson's concern about greatly expanding that project. I think we, we, one of the strengths of this demonstration project here in Tacoma, and I don't know about the ones around the country, but that, you know, we had a good concept of what an Alice family is like. Okay, you know, you know, and, and some, some, we had some framework to choose some folks that had a high likelihood of that if you helped them could then move on to being helping themselves. And, uh, that isn't necessarily easy to do, um, you, you end up not with economies of scale, but inefficiencies of scale if you expand it to 20,000 people, to be able to go and do that. I, I, I think that there are some models that some of the, um, um, Native American tribes do that have guaranteed income programs for their, their tribal communities that, uh, uh, have mixed success because, uh, some folks it really helps and other folks it doesn't, but they, but they, again, they have a revenue stream to, to allow them to, to do that. Um, there was one of the thing, and I'm trying to find the slide, but it was in the Center for, uh,
Strong Families?
Strong Families, and it talked about a number of families that reached a key financial goal. And I was wondering there's some examples of, of, of key financial goals that, 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 that these were goals that I, I assume a family chose in some way and then was successful in getting to it, but I'm not quite sure what that means.
So, um, I can give you kind of, um, the, I'm, I'm seeing the chart. We have a spreadsheet on our website that breaks down all the numbers. So, you know, one of the things about Centers for Strong Families is that, um, first of all, it's a model. Uh, and when a family or when an individual is a part of this, um, they are, um, sharing what their hopes and dreams are. Uh, and part of what ha, what part of the information that we collect, for instance, um, is around, um, those things needed to ensure that people are financially, can become financially stable. So it's improving credit scores. You know, on average, credit scores, um, on average, credit scores have, um, improved about 56 points or in, it's around six, 650, I think is the average uh, credit score at this moment in time. Uh, and then I mentioned the monthly income uh, increasing in about just under two, $2,000. But also too, a lot of the things that people want is, uh, to improve their wages. You know, at the, at the end of the day, you need income to take care of your family. And so, uh, wage progression. And a lot of the job coaches, the employment coaches at the Centers for Strong Families, you know, are working with individuals, you know, who want to figure out, you know, do I need more training? Do I, you know, need, need certification in order to improve their wages? So we do see increases, um, in wage progression, uh, getting more education. Uh, the biggest is around, um, uh, decrease in debt. What we see is on average $24,000 decrease in debt. Uh, it, and those are, you know, obviously there's some extremes, uh, on, on, um, the side of some families are able to get more debt, um, uh, decreased faster than others. Uh, we work with a lot of the credit unions, um, that work with Alice families. That's the population that they serve. And so they're able to help them reduce their debt and, and actually increase their assets. You'll be able to grow assets and grow savings. So I don't know if that answers your question fully, but.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. If I interpret your answer, you know, from my time when I spent a long time at the, the Community Technical College System, trying to help folks who are trying to use education to get ahead and then they had the needs for supports to do that and the, 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 the idea about trying to not do so well that you lose health or other, or other benefits, you know. It, you know, it became a problem when you were trying to help someone get a job. They were always looking for where is that line? And you gotta go over it to be able to go and do that. And, and there were some, particularly government agencies, uh, DSHS, for an example, that, uh, uh, they would decide what your goals needed to be. I, yeah, yeah, and, 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 and so, so, so this is what you've got to work towards rather than what how you would prioritize things. And then, and so it, 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 it sounds like at least we're not in that role. We're, 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 we're listening to the people we're trying to help so that we help them get to where they want to get to. And in most cases, that's, that's, that's really good. One of the things that I didn't see in your presentation and, and maybe it's because your organization is smart enough to say that that's not something we can tackle along with everything else, i- is, it dealt, dealt with, 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 with homelessness or at least the chronic homeless folks, uh, you know, there, 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 and there are others working on that in, in, in the county to do that, but that it seems that around the country and even locally, um, a lot of money that gets spent towards trying to solve that unsolvable problem guess goes down drains. And so I, you know, I, I'd, I'd say, you, you seem to be focused on things that can actually work as opposed to, uh, and do that. And I appreciate that. Um, I, I think, um, you know, your report sort of covers a period of time of when we were dealing with the environment of the pandemic that was going on that obviously impacted families in multiple ways and different ways to be able to go and do that. That I think we're, we're evolving from that, uh, but we're also now dealing with an inflationary period that can result in some backsliding for a family that's made some progress of, 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 of getting ahead. Um, so, so, so I guess is that, that in this inflationary period in that, um, are you optimistic that your fundraising is going to, uh, inflate?
Yeah, I'm, I think, uh, you know, we're not doing too bad as a United Way actually. Um, in terms of raising money, you know, the workplace campaign is going down. Uh, companies are, are doing different things. The United Way isn't the only game in town in terms of, uh, workplace campaigns, but we're, um, we're holding our own. We have this, uh, uh, we have a strong, you know, centennial campaign. You know, it's, um, I think it's, what we saw during the pandemic is I think nonprofits did well for the most part. I don't know of any nonprofit that closed their doors. Um, maybe some of the really tiny ones might have that were, you know, just like a kind of a volunteer led, but we know of no nonprofits that closed. I think what we're going to see as a result of inflation and, and, you know, recession and, you know, all those things that, um, could happen down, down the road is we're gonna see nonprofits having a tougher time. I mean, we're, we're seeing it. Uh, but we're also seeing that there's still a lot of generosity. So it's, uh, we're, we're seeing the workplace campaign change dramatically. Um, and so, uh, but, uh, people on the higher end are still giving very generously.
Well, I think that, uh, you know, with, as a city and personally, uh, you know, looking to remain as generous or more so as they have, but, uh, but also perhaps of being more selective to make sure that we're in, in, investing in things that are that, that are truly making a difference and, 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 and have real outcomes that they're trying to promote, not just existence of their organization. Um, but anyway, but thank you, you know, for, for, for the the work that you do and not just the, and, 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 and most importantly, the work that you do personally to bring groups together and, 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 and facilitate conversations such as your role with South Sound Military Communities Partnership, uh, and others. I think, uh, there are a lot of good organizations, but they need some structure to become a part of to actually be most impactful that they can. And, uh, I think United Way helps in that regard, uh, significantly. Thank you.
Captain Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening. It's nice to see you. I think I heard you say that some people were stop quitting their job to find a better job. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? How does that benefit?
Oh, they weren't, they weren't quitting. They were just, you know, taking time off to go and find higher paying jobs.
Oh, yeah, but they held on to the job they had. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, thank you. Nice to see you here. So I say that a lot of your numbers are very Pierce County general. I wondered if you had any Lakewood specific numbers, Lakewood specific stats on how our residents are using the resources from the United Way.
And I did send something. So hopefully you got the one page, it was a two, was a two-page document. Um, and the, it's, I, I think it said South Pierce or, um, but anyway, I'm gonna, I'm also gonna send an updated one, but the numbers are still the, the same. So yes, I do have, um, the specific numbers on, you know, uh, clients. You know, South Sound two-on-one, for instance, 9,100 calls in the kind of greater Lakewood, uh, area. Let's see, our Centers for Strong Families, we got 59 people that are, um, part of the, the, um, Center for Strong Family Clover Park. Yeah, and then, um, 19,000 residents are served through United Way's programs and investment in the greater Lakewood, um, area. And, and, uh, let's see. Community Impact Investments, nine, 9,727. So yeah, we do, we do touch Lakewood residents. But I can get you, I had my staff do another one that, that, um, is for Lakewood and includes Still Will Come, JBLM, and one other community.
I just had a couple of quick questions. With the good that is doled out through the agency to the various partners and vendors, what process, uh, do you folks undertake either annually or semiannually to evaluate the outcomes to ensure that the funding is going to those who leverage it best?
So every, uh, you know, year, we're, right now, we're on a three-year cycle. Um, and actually we extended it over co, because of COVID, so it's five years. But, um, we work very closely, my staff works very closely with the tw, it's 21 agencies that are getting the community investment dollars. Uh, and they have to provide a report once a year. Uh, but we also meet with them yearly, uh, or more than yearly. They meet with them several times a year. Because really, you know, we're looking to them to provide us with information in terms of what are the issues and needs. With the other efforts like, uh, two-on-one is evaluated, there's a national um, set of standards that they're evaluated on. And then our Centers for Strong Families, we're part of that national network. So we have to do certain things, uh, in order to, um, make sure that we continue to be a part of that network. Uh, so there are various ways that we, um, track. And Center for Strong Families has like 200 different data points that they collect.
On the two-on-one stats, I was, uh, happy to see that information. It looks like there are certainly Lakewood families that are being helped with that. Uh, you, I, I didn't know enough about it. I profess my ignorance on a little bit. How does one in need of services come to know about two-on-one as an option for navigation of services?
Yeah, you know, that's, um, usually they, if there are families that are going to agencies, you know, going to a nonprofit agencies, uh, DSHS, you know, those types of organizations, uh, are aware of two-on-one, you know, what, uh, and then just kind of word of mouth. Uh, you know, we don't, uh, you know, we don't have big billboards with two-on-one on there. You know, one of the things that we're concerned about is our two-on-one is from a not nine o'clock to, to four.
Right.
Um, and, uh, we have, um, uh, because we do the navigation, uh, one of the things that sometimes we get dinged on is the fact that it takes a little bit longer because, you know, ideally your information referrals are supposed to be a call, you get your, the names of places and you're done. It's a two, three-minute call. Well, our navigation calls can last sometimes a half an hour. Um, because we, it, it is meant to be, we're gonna help you access and navigate the syst, the system. So, uh, you know, letting, you know, different, um, entities know that two-on-one exists so that you can share it um, with residents in your, in your community.
Great. Well, we appreciate the update. It's great to see you again.
Good to see you. Thank you so much. Good questions. I like being kept on my toes.
Hopefully the new board member's doing a good job for you.
Yes.
One of my colleagues serves on United Way Board, so. Very good. Thank you again. Well, next we have a opioid litigation update with our city attorney Heidi Walker. I believe we have a few pages in our packet tonight, starting on page, it looks like 26, 29, 26.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney. And there are really three lanes, for lack of a better word, with this opioid stuff that we're dealing with. Lane number one is the litigation. Lane number two is once we get the distribution, you know, what do you want to do with it? And lane number three is the logistics between the litigation and the distribution, which is the OAC that we're supposed to be forming. And in any given circumstances, I talked to you over the next many months, I may be coming to you. I may be coming to you in one of those lanes or a variety of those lanes. Tonight, the lane that I'm in is the lane of, hey, we got some money. And we've got about eighty thousand dollars, which, um, in city money means we're not going to be building a building. Uh, we need to find, uh, an effective use for that money. And, um, that's basically what the memo in your packet is, and. In that capacity, uh, we convened a group of people at City Hall, and that included our Parks Director, who is here. And our Acting Police Chief and a few others to say, okay, well, this is the amount of money we have. There may be more later when we get other settlements, but what? Do we think that this money could go for? And we started with a pretty wide-open brainstorming session. Um, you know, what are the things that you think of that could be useful? Uh, based on the kind of impact the opioid epidemic has made here in Lakewood, and we had everything from. The Portland Lou, which is a specific kind of restroom that you can put in a park, and it's less susceptible to some of the kinds of damage. Um, than some others might be. That is about a quarter million dollar project. So, um, we talked about that, and we talked about some other things, working with other agencies and things like that. Ultimately, what we came to recommend, and this is just coming from inside. The city employees, based on what they see every day. Um, this amount of money could be very helpful in helping to defray some of the costs of the behavioral health contact team. And you may or may not be aware that there have been, um. Some efforts recently to make sure that that's up to full staffing, and it definitely helps when it's funded. So, um. If you're able to read the memo for yourself, I will also tell you that, um, the next. Settlement is in the pipeline, and I'll be before you, I believe, Monday with, um. An allocation agreement, what's called allocation agreement two, you know, son of original allocation agreement, if you will. And it's going to look a lot like the first one. What the difference in that one is going to be is that it doesn't have an overarching amount. Detailed in it because they're still working out some of the details with the, um. People who are settling with us, and in this go-around, it's, uh, Walgreens, Walmart, um. And several others that are CVS, they're, they're the sellers, and so, um. When that is settled, it will, the part that will be the same is fifty percent's going to the state and fifty percent is coming to the local governments. In order for us to qualify, we need to be under the one Washington MOU, which you've already authorized. And then we'll authorize that second allocation agreement. But really, tonight's purpose is to get before you. On, okay, this is money that we actually have in hand. Where are we gonna go with it?
Quick question on the behavioral health contact team recommendation. I mean, the council's already fully funded. For the biennium, two positions, correct?
That is correct, and they are not fully staffed in that area yet. I will tell you that, um.
They're not staffed at all right now, are they?
Correct. They're working on it, and there is hope on the horizon for getting it staffed if, if, um, I'm hearing. Chief Unred, Acting Chief Unred correctly, I think that we have some things in the pipeline that way. Um, what I would tell you is that this is not like drug money. Typically with drug money, you're not allowed to supplement, you know, it has to be added on top of, you can't then displace the money. I believe in this instance, you are allowed to take the money that you get from opioids. You can use it to fund the behavioral health contact team. And then you don't necessarily need to spend general fund money.
Right.
On the behavioral health contact team.
Which is what we've allocated. Okay. Mr. Brandstetter.
Same as Mayor. So the, the. The dollars that you mentioned in your memo, um, in there, it's, 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 it's not a fortune, okay? But, um, but in terms of our defining dollars, these are one-time dollars. This is not an annual amount, this is a one-time amount.
You're. I would say you're incorrect, but you're sort of correct. And this is why you're sort of correct. The eighty-four thousand dollars represents the first two years of eighteen years of payment. So it really is an annual amount over the course of those eighteen years, but it's not eighty-four thousand every year. It's closer to half of that.
So this, so what we got is we got a two-year payment, and then we're gonna get a year, an annual payment? Uh, of about half of it?
I believe so. One of the things that I should go back and check is that I believe the next distribution is coming in June. I think that's what we missed on the first go-around. So if it's coming each June, it should be about forty thousand dollars each June. I want to make sure that I didn't miss something with the December payment. I think the reason we got paid in December was because that's when we entered the agreement.
Okay, and the, the. The strings that are attached to this money is that, that, that there is. There is a, a range of. Uses that you have to, uh, connect to when you use the money.
That is correct, Councilmember Brandstetter, and I'm looking at that document right now. It is twelve pages of what the money can be used for. It is fairly broad, and it has general areas of, and then it lists specifics. And so there's money for treatment, if that's the area that you tend to look at. There's money for, um, education, community education. Um, response, all those things are listed, um, in the twelve pages. I would say it's pretty broad. Um, you would definitely want to be able to connect your expenditure to the kinds of things that are listed in the twelve pages.
And then I guess the, the other thing is. There's no time limit. You could, you could bank the money until you had three hundred thousand, and then. You say, I mean, you could, you could, you, you don't have to spend the money within the biennium that you receive it.
That's true. If you wanted to collect the money over a course of years, now, one caution that I would give you is that ultimately. We are going to have, um. A reporting mechanism where we report our expenditures to the OAC. And I think if we are banking the money for any substantial length of time, we are gonna want to be able to explain why that is the biggest and best impact. On the opioid epidemic. Um, and that it is intended to help defray some of those things. One of the, um. Interesting components of this lawsuit is that when the lawsuit started. The idea was that each jurisdiction, ultimately, when you try a case, you have to show what the damage to your community is. And essentially, because of the way this litigation has gone, rather than have everybody prove exactly what damage has been done to their community. They're paying every jurisdiction, and the idea is, okay, you didn't have to actually prove immediate damage or what kind of damage in your community. We're trusting you with the money to put it towards the damage that's been done.
So, so even though our, our award was not based on. Documented damage. We had to say we were damaged. What did we say?
Well, it's, it's a class action that involves, um, jurisdictions across the United States and in every single state, and so, um. Basically, what's happened here is that the settlement is with the state of Washington, and in order to settle it with Washington completely. They've said, throw in all the cities as well, because we don't want to settle with Washington over here. And then have a jurisdiction that actually did document everything come out of the woodwork and say, here's our proof that we were separately damaged. The incentive that the defendants have is to make sure that they are taking care of this in one fell swoop. They aren't having bits and pieces come at them. Once they're settled, they're truly settled.
So when. When we did this initial brainstorming about what we might use the money for. Did we have any specific areas that, where the city had damages or gaps? That we were able to focus on, or were we starting from?
I think that.
Generalization.
The, the perspective of the police department, and we took it pretty seriously when they talked about it, I, I think. They would say that a significant. Part of the reason we've even needed the behavioral health contact team is because of the opioid epidemic. And so to that way of thinking, um, it would make some sense to use the money for that purpose.
Okay, and, and I'll just say that that surprises me. Because. You know, you know. While they've talked about, uh, uh, things that, uh, the behavioral health, the reports that we've gotten from Chief Zaro regarding the work of the behavioral health contact team. And they, they focused on things like homelessness and, and, and others. But he never made a specific point that said. You know, that, 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 that opioid and opioid addiction was something that that team was dealing with, that was generally tended to be more mental health. Related issues to be able to go and do that.
Well, Councilmember Brandstetter, I personally told this council. That I had talked to the behavioral health contact team, and they have represented to me that the vast majority. Of who they're dealing with out there is drug-related and not mental health-related. Vast majority.
Well, I, um, would, would look to do that, and I guess, uh, I, I, I would then wonder if we wanted to. Refer for recommendations regarding the use of these dollars. Is, is there one of our advisory committees, perhaps the Community Services Advisory Committee, or, or, or one of the, that, that, uh. You, you know, we could ask to take a look at it and, and. Give us some recommendations, uh, rather than looking internally as to how we might as a government address this issue. Um, I think there are ways to, 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 to research, uh. Broader options before we have to make a decision, given that we don't really, we're not really. Don't really have a timeline, and in fact, the mental health contact team is funded for this biennium anyway for the next, uh, going on. But it's nice to, nice to know that, 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 that you have money to work towards a problem as opposed to just having a problem with no money. Thank you.
A, a couple of comments. I, I believe that the overall settlement is, it's not a per capita settlement, though sometimes it works out close to that. It's based on a formula based, uh, which is. Kind of a nationwide conclusion based on social science studies. Where they measure things like. How many pills were sold compared to the population, how many drug deaths were in the jurisdiction, those kind of things, and, and they, they come out with. A formula based on certain metrics. The surprising thing is. Seattle didn't get more than its per capita share, which, when I looked at it for the county, was the first thing I did from a. A numbers guy standpoint would say, okay. Let's see if Seattle snuck something in here. You know, it's a national formula, and it's, it's been repeated, and so, um. You know, Grace Harbor County may get more because they had phenomenal amount of opioids sold down there, and they have, uh, more drug deaths per capita, and so they get proportionately more, not. Um, it's for seventeen years. I think there's a little. Kicker for the attorneys in the first. The, the, they have some upfront loading. I think this is more like, gonna be like sixty thousand, sixty-eight thousand a year for the, for a seventeen-year period, but the attorneys get some money upfront because. They're old guys, and they probably aren't gonna be in their firms fifteen years from now, so they wanna make sure they get paid. Mr. Wayland can tell you about that. The, um. I'm in favor of kind of placing a hold on it for now and then looking at it, uh. Particularly with respect to. Behavioral health outreach, but another thing we might look at is. You know, we have a veterans court, and in, in order to be eligible, you have to have a way to get treated, and right now, that's. Through the VA on somebody who's eligible, but we probably have some veterans who aren't eligible for VA healthcare. And so unless they have some private insurance that covers it, they might be. Have a, have a drug problem, be eligible for veterans court, and yet not have a funding mechanism for the treatment. So we might want to look at something like that. Uh, so I just. Say that, say, as an example of why we might say, put a hold on it. While we're holding it, we're gonna get pressure from the Health Department who wants all the money. And that's a caveat. They, they have put on the full-court press to everybody, uh, they want the Oversight Committee, which was, the Oversight Committee in the settlement was actually, I think. The, the genesis of that was actually the settling parties that were paying. They didn't want the money to go down the drain like it, or be diverted like the cigarette money was in most states. Where they, they settled for one thing and it just went away, yeah. Uh, and so they said, okay, well, if we're gonna pay this, we want it to go to the problem, and they negotiated a very broad. Uh, application of different things that you could use it for. Uh, but they have an Oversight Committee, which is merely an Oversight Committee required by, and has to be an agreement between the jurisdictions, which includes us, so we have to raise our hands and say yes. And they, uh, that gets an, an after-the-fact look. Did you spend it on something that's, that's included? It's an auditing committee. The proposal by the Health Department and some members of the county council. Is take their opioid task force. And let them run the show. Tell you what it's gonna be used for and. Uh, be preemptive and take the, you know, you put the money in our pot and we'll spend it for you. And they want to create one committee instead of having a separate Oversight Committee, which is required, so. I'm dead set against that. I'd like to see them come out here and work on septic tanks like they should, but, uh, that's a whole other issue. So, um, just something to be. Classical of if we don't spend the money right away is we're gonna keep getting. Ranged to give it to somebody else. But in the meantime, I think we should hold it and, uh. And be very, be careful about it. We only have seventeen years.
Yeah, there's no rush to, to spend. We've got plenty of planning opportunity. Maybe powering it down to the Community Services Advisory. Maybe make some sense, you know, at least they can provide some recommendations or a look-see. They don't have to spend the money, obviously. Yeah, well, they don't have expertise, but I guess they can call potential providers on an RFP. Like we would, you know, like we've done before, so. Again, no, no rush, but it's something that we can probably add to the work plan, it seems to me. Any other questions, comments?
The direction I'm hearing is that we internally should consider whether or not the Community Services Advisory Committee has room. In their work plan for this and when that would be, and that this would go back through that process before it comes back to this body.
Seems to me that that's a way to do it. Otherwise, we don't have. Really good information without them going through some sort of process that either seeks an RFP for some proposals. From vendors that are actually doing the work on the ground in the community. That's my thought, but what do you guys think?
This will fall in line, uh, priority-wise, based on some of the other work that that committee mayor may not be working on, and so it may not be that they come back. You know, in a week, they're, they will put it in line with their other priorities, and, um. I will tell you, I will be back in front of you again next week on one of the other lanes, which is to authorize the, um, allocation too.
Okay, very good. Great. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, next we've got, uh, two. Well, we got the naming process for Motor Avenue. I guess that would be next, and we'll talk about the park capital improvement program update from Ms. Dodsworth, so. Do you wanna take us through the naming process here for Motor Avenue?
Sure.
AKA Colonial Plaza, AKA Unity Plaza, AKA.
Sure, um, good evening, council, mayor and council. Uh, sure, I'm here to sort of follow up on the meeting that you had in October, and I wasn't able to attend that meeting, I apologize, but did listen to. The meeting, and there's a lot of information shared. There is a lot of different ideas, and so, um, I kind of wanted to summarize what I'd heard and, um. Provide a little bit of background, because there were a couple of things that, um, weren't included in that conversation that I just wanted to make sure the council was on board with. Uh, or just aware of, and then talk a little bit about a potential process that we could follow to get to where. Um, the area that we're talking about just needs a proper name. That's kind of what I think the, the gist of the conversation was, um. For the meeting on the twenty-fourth. Well. I just wanted to remind council, you know, since. The incorporation, the city's been trying to create this downtown area, this. The incorporation, the city's been trying to create this downtown area, this sense of place. And based on how the city was built and how ways you come and go, it's been a bit of a challenge and so cities, the city and city council's done an awful lot of work to try and do that. And um one of the areas was to create our central business district and to create sort of this new. Way of using our downtown area. And that generated the downtown plan, which generated the idea of doing this complete streets project, which was mentioned during that meeting. Well, it was Motor Ave and it was, um, we received funds to do that, but it it was confusing the granters and I don't know if you all remember that, but it was confusing, it couldn't be used for tran. It wasn't a transportation project because it was a complete streets. Re renovation project and so that's when we decided instead of calling it Motor Ave, because that was confusing our grant. Review folks is that's when the Colonial Plaza project started, that's where we, how we kind of got that name picked because. The area was known as the Colonial Center, there's a big metal sign in the grass right now that says Colonial Center, so. So that's kind of how that name generated, but it is correct, it is, does, the area does have a bit of an identity process. An identity problem because. We do call it Colonial Plaza, we do call it Motor Ave, we do call it the Plaza at Motor Ave and it does have a variety of names and so. The idea was to come up with a process so that we could get to a point where council could make some decisions on on what we wanted to call it. Or refer to it as we move forward because it does have a series of names. So um looking at the resolution as well as just, you know, common thoughts regarding how we might get there is, you know. What do we want to call it and why? And so when you look at the resolution, there's several criteria that we could consider, one is is um, you know, first of all. To decide who's going to suggest the name, council, of course, gets to make the decision, that's that's their role, but. Uh, we've had different ways of having that happen, council could suggest a name or a series of names, we could ask the community to such suggest a name or a series of names, or maybe an individual comes forward. So that's one way to do it. Then we talk about, you know, what criteria might be used, we have a policy, so that's good because that helps us follow along. When should we make the change, you know, it, why now? Is it because it needs identification and we want to be able to, to, you know, give people to start thinking about it as a certain way or. Are we recognizing the past of how it was used or are we really thinking about what do you want, what we want it to be in the future? You know, if there's some big ideas of how that area may change and there's an awful lot of opportunity for change in that area with the QFC building and empty businesses and some different things, so. Um, you know, when we make the change, is it forever, is it for just now, um, or so just to be thinking about. About that, are we branding it for now, just so that everybody can know where to go for the street festivals or are we really thinking this is what it's going to be for the future? So we can really add some excitement to that. Um, then we can talk about, you know, when you start thinking about options, which there were several options that were created during that meeting. Is is that are we doing it because um of um. A physical space, um, a historic element there like the theater, is it because of the name of the road, just as you said, it's a road when you're not using it, it's a plaza when you close it off. Um, and then, of course, um, if we do name it or rename it. Then we need to think about how we identify the area, how we assign the area, how we divert people to get there. Um, and build some brand or some excitement around it, so all of those things will happen. So what we heard council say, I believe, is is that you were really hoping to do some kind of a survey that got the a lot of community input and it could be a survey, it could be website. Um, information, it could be presentations at various meetings, I mean, there's lots of different ways of gathering, but at some point. We'd have three to five names to consider with another so that we met the uh role or the. In the resolution, it talked about getting information from folks, so um. So again, there's a lot of criteria you could consider, so in this process, we talked about a survey of some sort. And we weren't sure if you wanted the community to just provide those names or I did hear several folks say maybe we provided three to five. Opportunities to vote on and then we could get feedback and see what really generated some interest. So again, what are your three to five ideas, there are a lot of different um things brought up, so. Uh, looking at again the past use or the history of the site, it was called the Colonial Center. Um, and so you could come up with a potent potential name like Colonial Plaza, that's been used and. And as you saw on the back page, we actually have banners that say Colonial Colonial Plaza and people do refer to it as Colonial Plaza and that's what was noted in your downtown plan. Um, it is Motor Avenue, that's the name of the road. So um, we've talked about that the Motor Avenue Plaza or the Plaza on Motor Avenue. And that's really what's being used now, again, on the the last page, you can see that's how we promoted it for our street festivals, there are the street festivals on Motor Ave. Um, you could talk about, you know, it's a future use of the site, you're really hoping for a central business district, so maybe you call it. Central Marketplace or Central Plaza. Is there a significant feature there, you talked about the Lakewood Theater, so maybe that's Theater on the Square or. The Lakewood Theater Square, the confusion there is is that we have three active theaters that people really go to and know and. And honestly, they know that that's an old building, but there's not a lot of current um and people that are really recognizing that theater, but you do have the Playhouse, you have two movie theaters. So where am I going to the theater on the square, which square am I going to? Um, and then, you know, we talked about and at standing um individuals or historical figures or even our Native American heritage. And that's how that community or Unity Plaza sort of came forward, so. So if council was to um give us direction to come up with three to five names or you wanted to tonight pick three to five names. What the idea is is that we could start the process of gathering community input and there's lots of ways of doing that with the different sources that the community has, we'd work with our communications manager to make sure we got that information out. We'd promote it, um, the connections is going to be going out soon, that could be a way of doing it on our website, sometimes, you know, all of those different ways. To ask the kids, youth council, we're going to have a big youth summit coming up, so there's different ways of gathering information, we can easily do that. Um, so again, whether council provides those suggested names or you want it to be a bit open or you just want us to come up, I gave you kind of some suggestions just based on. On that, but those were just suggestions, they weren't uh being recommended or anything like that. So then, once we gather all that information, whatever method we do to capture it, we'll bring that back to city council so that you could then um. Get to a point where we really might be considering a name. And then that would go through the park board to decide, you know, get maybe some additional community input when you. What we found last time was we had three different ideas floating, we did a public hearing, the park board did the process and did an excellent job, but it was a little muddy at the end because it was. Well, we came up with this, but then they talked about that and we decided on that, so I think that the. Decision of the council at that time was if we're going to put through um a suggestion for a name. For a public process, whatever it is at the beginning to gather several names, let's have one. One name that we consider and then chat about and make a decision, good or bad, may work or may not work. But when we had um a lot of different names happening. For the final process, it got muddy muddy, so that was sort of the outcome of that last process, of course, council can just direct us to do whatever you choose. And then um we would. Put an application together with the name that we come up with and we would really look vet it, so to speak, so we could take a look at it and decide. Does it meet the criteria of the resolution, does it meet the criteria of council, does it meet the intent of the need? And then are there any issues that might have unintended consequences, so we would talk about that. Do a full review process and then bring a recommendation back to council from the park board. If if that's the group that the city manager chose to to do the process, but they've done it before and so they'd be happy to do it again. Is um to come forward and say, hey, we love it, here's our recommendation or yeah, didn't didn't fly so well with the community. So um and we come back to you and then we could start over, but. So that's kind of the process that we've suggested throughout this, but again, there's, there was a lot of feedback from council and. Um, we just wanted to make sure that we're kind of getting as much information from you as possible for we move, before we move forward with a process that might work for you.
Didn't see Cheese Grater Plaza on the list.
Giant Cheese Grater Plaza.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Bransdeter.
So I see the primary purpose of. A place name is to communicate. Where the place is. So that people get there and find it. And you pointed out. That we have more than one theater and the confusion, I think, there is grammar. Because the name that's on here, Theater on the Square. Tells you which theater, it doesn't tell you. The name the square, no other theater has a square. Or a public place, so it's Theater Square, Theater modifies Square. It's not that. You're saying where the theater is, which is what on the square connects, you know. That happens to be my favorite, but you know Colonial Plaza is historic, but isn't too historic because that's not what the claps named the place. Yeah, when they built it, it was something else, it just took on that name because of the style or architecture. I agree with Motor Ave uh being confused. Confusing in the context of the development, uh, but it's definitely a legitimate. Choice. Think that Central Marketplace. While aspirational is confusing. It's not a marketplace. Probably not even central. That may be someday. And you know, you're gonna blast, I think you have some good options here if we take on the square out. And uh. Do a survey and have a blank. Or additional choices. Yeah. Yeah, just run, maybe throw Central Marketplace out of there, run the other ones with a a blank and. See what suggestions we get. Actually, when it gets down to it, I think there's a there's not going to be probably, there may be a plurality, I doubt there'll be a majority. So it's almost like you'd come back to the council with a title only bill. Where we we don't know who we're going to point until we vote on it, we come back with recommendations, we have a. An ordinance that has a blank in it and. You see what seven people say. But I I do like the idea that we could. Substantially more input.
Mr. Bransdeter.
I don't know, I think it's, you know, it's. We've. Worried about it and had had one false start on this, so it it's 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 time to move forward with something uh. Definitive, right, I think I got. Three thoughts, one is. I don't think Motor Avenue is an option. Uh, I really like Motor Avenue, but Motor Avenue. There is a Motor Avenue, it exists, it's three blocks long. It's not the area that we want to name. And even after we name that Plaza in front of the theater. It's still going to be on Motor Avenue. I mean, you you know, the addresses are going to be there and you know, we're not going to change one block and then still have two blocks of Motor Avenue and if we call it Motor Avenue, we. We're not really talking about all of that, so we're not going that way. I um. When we passed the resolution about how we would go naming things wherever, okay? You know, and we said if the public wanted to submit a name, they could do that, but they that they submitted it along with a check for two hundred and fifty dollars and. Some other things and I'd say that we could waive that process and say. You know. Submit to us. Uh, the names, uh, the names that you think, but include some reasons why, or just send us a name, send us some of the reasons why, like we would want in a normal thing. And you know, I think that out there in the community. We'll get some names that we wouldn't come up with here in this room tonight to to consider. To be able to go and do that, but I do agree with Ms. Dodsworth is we. Need to narrow it down to. One or maybe no more than three to send to the parks board to say what. What to evaluate and give us uh another thought at or decide on something. But let's get a bigger. Transparent uh system to gather potential names. And I guess that the last thing I would say is that we need to do this in a in a way. That. We would intend to do when we finally build the other park in the downtown. Because we're going to have another park that will need a name. Uh, to be able to go and 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 do that and so and and I would. Say we 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 don't want to have to create a new process every time there's something to do that, so let's be deliberate about something that'll work. For the next new place and the new place after that that we that we develop. I think the school district did a good job of when they were looking to name the new middle school where they solicited input. From from the community about what were the possible names and then distilled it down and then finally got to a small group that made a final decision. Um, I think we, I I think we can do that, um, and and I also don't know that we've. I I think we are at a timeline of where we need to start a process, but we don't have a timeline of when the process has to end, so we can take our time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth's presentation. So I agree with Councilmember Anderson in that I think that we should have a couple of suggestions for people with a write in. I'm not really a fan of a play on words with community, it's like putting a Z at the end of kids or something like that, so if we did community. Unity, really large, but I think Unity Plaza is okay. But so I just think it's improper grammar and it just bothers me, like I said, with the, that's just a personal thing, like you put a Z at the end of something. So I would like to see something a little bit more um refined, so like I do like Unity Plaza. I think that you have already moved forward with calling it Motor Ave. So a lot of people already are referring to that space as Motor Ave and the events that happen there. Are on Motor Ave, so I think that that is probably a choice that should be out there, even though it's only one section of it. But that's already how people are referring to it currently. So I do like the idea of putting it out and using different venues, like you said, like the Connections Magazine, maybe some things at Summer Fest, things like that. Um, you know, the venues and the ways to get that out to the community, so those are my thoughts.
Have any thoughts, Deputy Mayor?
It has always been Colonial Plaza for me. So that would be my first choice, I think, but. I'll go with the group.
Sounds like we've got some consensus to do a mini survey. That would have Colonial Plaza. Unity Plaza. Say Theater on the Square, Theater Square. Just Theater Square. Yeah, the Plaza on the Ave or the.
Or just Motor Ave, I mean, it's kind of, it's, it feels a little modern for, because it's Motor Avenue, but it's more, you know, meet you down at Motor Ave or something, I mean, it's just something we could throw there. And put other.
And then if so, why, kind of a thing, you know?
Yeah, I like that, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And we can do a little summary as to, you know, why and just call it an identity crisis, I mean, that's kind of a fun way of saying, it's like, what does it want to be when it grows up, right?
Right, exactly.
I mean, well, somebody smarter than me will put that.
It doesn't want to be a burned out. Former QFC building, that's what it does not want.
Well, you know, it's, that's, that's really how most people refer to it because it's like next, the old QFC, that's how people think of it and uh just. That they remember that more than theater, right, they remember that more than the the this cool street with the lights, so we can change that hopefully soon. Yeah, unless they give us six million dollars.
Exactly, exactly, well, good, well, thank you for that, it sounds like you've got a plan.
And I'm sure, I was just going to say, we'll get a real succinct process, I mean, timeframes and then we'll have the city manager share that with you during his remarks.
That'd be great, I don't know if there's time enough to get anything like this out in Connections Magazine, this next issue, probably not, right, because that's already out the door. Totally, okay, very good. Good, well, um, I know we've got the Parks uh Capital Improvement Program update, why don't we take five minutes? So that we can get the charts and darts down front and everyone can take a quick stretch break and we'll come back in five minutes and get going on the significant work. Ready? Are we back on Brianna? Oh, great. All right, Ms. Dodsworth, the show is yours.
Great. Um, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Um, I'd like to remind you, reintroduce, this is Stacy Redding. She's our capital projects coordinator and she's going to. Share today in the conversation regarding. Um, a park CIP update. Really, we're going to focus today on American Lake Park and Wordslake Park. So currently the city is managing about $18 million in park CIP projects. They're all in various stages of development. For example. We met with Primley Park neighbors and we're getting ready to do some just small improvements to this neighborhood park. We're really excited that Springburg just started after a long permitting process. We, we're getting just started last week on, um, Springburg Park to do that expansion project. And, um, tonight we're going to give you information on again, American Lake Park expansion as well as the Wordslake Park project. So, um, the good news is, is that, you know, we've done a really good job of applying for just about every grant we can get for these different park projects that can match each other and. And maximize those opportunities. But the cost of doing business certainly has increased over the years, especially. During long, uh, times for permitting and long times for just getting materials and things. So the cost of doing business is, has. Risen. And sometimes that's just based on way the cost of doing business. Other times it's because we find. Issues out on site that we have to deal with, or there might be scope, um, expansion based on safety or council need or neighborhood need. So, um, tonight we're going to provide you an update on these two projects and where we're at and where we want to go. So let's get started. We're going to start with American Lake Park. So back in 2019 and 20, we worked with the neighbors, we worked with council and park board to come up with a master plan. And the master plan, um, you can see here is what we, uh, started with up on the top. I guess that would be the. The northeast corner. Thank you. Uh, you know, we talked about, um, expanding the parking lot. They did that in conjunction with veterans, uh, the veterans drive project. Uh, we were planning for that. We're going to be putting in a new monument sign. Once we have one selected. Um, we did a lot of pedestrian improvements to get into the park. So that's been great. And then this was primarily the main purpose was to make ADA, um, access down to the beach. That was a big part of the master plan. So now we are in about 60% design. And so we've gotten, um, worked through logistically how to get from here to there. The ADA was a little bit more challenging. We certainly wanted to go around the trees. Um, there has to be handrails on there. And so we didn't want to put that right down the middle of the park. That would really change. The feel of those open spaces, but you're seeing here on, again, the left side is the original master plan and you can see on the right. We'll go into some detail today on, on those elements and improvements. So starting with the plaza, you know, the entry to the park is, is really going to change. Right now we have that big restroom building. It's an old building. The picnic shelter is on the backside of it. It creates a lot of safety issues and it's just not conducive to having, you know, you're having this family celebration and every time someone wants to go to the restroom or use the shower, they're walking right through your event. So. It's kind of a bit of a challenge. And, and again, being on the backside of the park and having the building in front creates some safety issues as well at times. So we're going to be getting rid of that building, um, relocating the restroom and really improving that, um. Entry area. So that's where the restroom is going to go over here to the side. And then we're be making, um, some playground, um, ADA access improvements as well. There weren't sidewalks around the playground or ramps into the playground. So we'll be making. Adding some seating and picnic areas, but also creating some, uh, new playground expansion opportunities for the families who visit there. This is really one of the most, you know, besides Fort Stillagum, of course, one of our most popular parks, especially in the summer, but is used all year long as a neighborhood park. And so you'll see people there all, all year long. Uh, the next project, do you want to talk a little bit about the ADA access?
So we explored, um, several accessible routes and this was the only access route that we could achieve an, uh. Acceptable slope for the access route, which coming from the parking lot crosses back over to the east side of the park. And there is some slight grade changes there as well as some handrails installed along that access route. And then as you approach the beach, um, instead of coming down, uh, directly, the slope was quite steep. So it. Uh, travels across the main upper area. There's a viewpoint area overlooking, uh, the water. And then across a new stairway with a switchback hugging the western side of a new retaining wall. Down to the, uh, a destination plaza at the beach.
And the switchback on the, the west side that she's noting will be very similar, similar to what we did at Harry Todd Park to get people down. To that area. And then just to note, um, you know, the upper, the, the retaining wall, we really believed at the beginning of this project that that. Uh, was going to be sound and that we would be able to utilize that throughout this process, but through the. Engineering and the review, um, it, it has to be replaced. It's not stable enough to support the park and all of the new uses down there. So they'll also be making some beach improvements. So once you get down to the beach, um, this is an area, there's kind of a funny little drop there. So we'll be putting in a seating, a seat wall there. So you'll again, add some additional capacity on the beach, but it'll also provide some erosion control. And then, um, we have down here, this, uh, that was bulkhead that needed to be replaced. We knew that. And then we're also doing a safety improvement. That was recommended by our police department. We had an awful lot of problems last, in the last summers where kids were just. On the dock and jumping in the water and jumping in the boat launch area and in the way of the boats. So we're going to be taking that. We did some fencing to try and temporarily solve it, but we're going to be taking the dock and moving it to the other side of the pilings. Kids want to jump in the water. We're not going to get around that. You can stand there, you can enforce it and you can sign it, but the kids are going to want to jump in the water. So this actually creates a safe way for them to jump in the water, get back out without putting a float dock out there. Cause we know there's some safety issues.
Probably the unsolvable problem. How do you, uh? How do you mitigate the, uh, the interface between the fishermen who aren't supposed to be there, the people jumping off the docks? And, and the boat launch, because it's, you know, as you know, it's an absolute zoo. And that temporary fence. Does some good, but they still come over on the other side. So how are we going to deal with that, that interface? Is there going to be a place that says, okay, on this side of, this end of this dock, you can fish. So you stay out of, you stay out of boat launch? Or?
The fishing is an issue because, um, the area is built for swimming. It's a swim area. So that activity is okay. You're not supposed to be fishing. Off of a boat, off of a dock near a boat launch. There's some kind of RCW code that you're not supposed to be doing, mixing those two activities and it's really not safe. So the fishing part is really a challenge because you're not supposed to fish there anyway. And it's so busy in the summer. Fishing is, is not so much of a problem during the busy, busy summer months. But. We're creating an opportunity for people to be able to. Get into the swim area and stay out of the boating area because that's really a safety issue for people and boats and propellers. The, the fishing, you know, we sign it, um, there's somewhat of an enforcement, but there's just not really a way to, unless you're having a. You know, police officer there all the time to deal with the, uh, the fishing interaction. So. We haven't really solved that problem because it's really not, it's not really an appropriate use at that site.
Yeah, it substantially reduces the capacity of the boat launch. You have, if you have four places where there could be a boat. And two of them have fishermen.
Yeah. One of the things that the park board had recommended, um, previously was to take a look at. At allowing, you know, right now it's not allowed. That's the rules there and it's signed such. Um, but they talked about, you know, removing those signs in the off season when it's not as active because, you know, the boat launch is there year round, but it's not as busy as it is obviously during the June through. Um, mid-September time. So the idea was like from May, from October through May, allow fishing down on the docks because really. It's those two interactions aren't so bad. The problem is when you have a zillion kids and people trying to jump into the water, you've got every boat trying to launch their boat and get in from the lake. That's when it's a real challenge for fishing. So. That could be a solution, but, um, that's why we built a fishing pier over at Harry Todd was to try and get the fishermen. And fisherwomen, fisherpeople to be able to go to a place where they could safely and excessively fish. And then what we do is really send them down to Lake City Boulevard. That's at that street end there. That's really where we tell people to go fish because you can fish there without interfering with, um, swimming and boating traffic. So.
So coming down that boat ramp though, you know, that's to the far left of what we see in the picture, right? I, I was wondering why. Yeah. Yep. Right. Got it. So my thought was there isn't really an appropriate place to the far left of the screen there to put like a fishing pier to the far left of the boat launch. Got it. Okay.
That's more of a problem too, because you're now sending people to fish on to private property.
Okay, Mr. Brandstetter has a quick question.
Could you just orient me to? Where the mural is? And that's not the bulkhead that's being replaced?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to lose the mural?
You're going to, you're going to be losing that mural, but that doesn't mean we can't put in a new mural.
Okay. And the, um. The lower portion of the ADA walk. Once it starts to have a grade is, is going to have handrails, the, the one on the, on the north side.
Yes. If it's an ADA walk, it has to have handrails. It's required.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next, um, parking lot improvements. So one of the things that we'll be doing is, is as you know, we, they expanded the parking lot, um, as part of the veterans drive, but there was no landscaping putting in. So we'll be adding trees. Um, the other thing that we're going to be doing here is, um, putting in, we, right now we have an area for a dumpster. We bring in extra dumpsters. We literally get 30 to 50 large giant. Bags of garbage every single day at that park. Sometimes it's twice a day and we, we're there, uh, picking it up. Always in the morning, always late at night, and sometimes in the middle of the day. And so we're, we're recommending to install a trash compactor. And that is to help manage that amount of trash that's brought in there. And, um, we're also be putting in. I think we're, yeah, we're going to be putting in some bays of trash cans to help people. Better pick up after themselves and put things in the right spot. So there's capacity there for their garbage. And also for the maintenance staff that have to go down there and collect it. It's, it's an easier route than going to 15 different garbage cans all over the place. So we'll be creating some banks. The other thing that we're going to be doing is, so that's the new restroom building. So we're super excited. Oh, that's the compactor. Sorry. What we're going to be doing also is coming from the boat launch right now, there's not a clear path to get back to the restroom building up there. You're kind of walking up the middle of the road or you're trying, so we'll be. Restriping this area and creating a pathway between the parking lot and the fence line, which that has to be, uh, this. Bulkhead has to be repaired too. It's a bunch of rocks and riprap. So we'll be creating a safe passage from the boat launch. So when you want to run up and use the restroom, you'll be able to get up there easier. And then just some other improvements I'll just share is again, I talked about the trash bays. Um, we'll be doing some utilities and irrigation and site furnishings throughout the area. So the total pro, cost when we started doing this grant in 2019. You can take a look at, uh, the cost that we, um, estimated was 1.6 plus a million dollars. And the current cost estimate is $4.1 million. For fortunately, we had, uh, with grants and resources, we had $2.3 million anticipated for funding. So we are. Looking at, uh, 1.78 to 1,782,000 and some change to do all of the things that we want to do. You know, there were some safety issues that we needed to bring up. We'll just show you some of the cost changes. Just to start off with the restroom building, when we did this grant, we had just ordered the bathroom for Fort, or for Harry Todd Park. So we utilized that cost. At the cost of its, it's, we're making it six bay versus five bay, but the cost has gone up $200,000. You know, the retaining walls, we talked about that whole, you know, the retaining wall is holding up the park, so you have to fix that retaining wall, and it's not structurally sound. So the big retaining wall, as well as two side retaining walls, um those increased costs there. The plaza, when it was proposed, was just some grass when you entered the park, and we felt like this is really a special place that we needed to. Improve that plaza area, so it's a bit more of a really featured entry area now that we can walk right in and see the the water. And you can see the different, the changes throughout the the project. Some of those, again, are based on safety, summer scope increase to solve some problems for the park. So the project schedule is, uh we're in final design now. We'll be going into permitting in the spring. Um bidding out in the summer with the idea of starting right after um Labor Day. And then being done by next summer, so it's ready for the community. There will be various impacts to the folks wanting to come and use the park based on construction, and we'll work as best we can to make certain areas accessible, but some areas just won't be. Are there any questions on American Lake, or do you want us to get through Wordslake before we ask some questions?
We're steamrolling ahead, it looks like, with permitting and construction. But we got a little bit of a money deficit, so what's the proposal to make that up?
My understanding is there's one-time funding to cover that in a variety of ways. City manager might be able to help us with that.
Yeah, Mayor and Council for both of these projects, we would be proposing that you be funded as part of the carry forward budget adjustment. That'll be coming before you. Later this spring in about the April, May timeframe.
Wordslake Park. So Wordslake Park, of course, is our uh area on the east side of town. It's really the only open space we have on the, from the. On the east side of Bridgeport Avenue, so we're, it's a really important space. It's currently twenty-six acres, and it's in uh quite a. Densely populated area. This is the master plan that was shared with Council in two thousand and eighteen. At that time, we'd broken it down into three different phases, uh primarily for looking for grants, as well as being able to afford the different projects. So um currently, we're uh in final design, no, we're in permitting, right, for uh phase one. And um that project is funded with um a variety of grant resources. And the first uh we were, it was the first time we had applied for Land and Water Conservation Fund, and we got a million dollars from them, so we're really excited about that. But it has proven to be really challenging um grant program to work with from an implementation to be ready. In fact, we've been working with them for over two years, and fingers crossed, we're gonna finally have our contract in a couple of years, I mean, a couple of years. A couple of months. Um but there was a lot of work that had to be done, which is, which will be reimbursable when and if we get our contract. But it is also um, it's delayed some of the other RCO grants that were tied to it, because it's all one big happy family. But great thing is, is that we're getting ready to move forward with um phase one, uh which is really gonna make a great impact on this, on this site. So we'll be talking about the first um improvements we have, is we're gonna be making the entry so that you can actually. Know that the park is there and see the park, so we're widening the entry. This is also piggybacking on a public works engineering project. They're putting a light in right here at this location at Pine and Eighty-Fourth. And that will make a significant impact to the entry uh by signage and lighting, and then the improvements that we'll be making. Uh next, remember, this was our first pump track. We talked about this. We're gonna be putting a pump track in here. Um it'll be our second pump track, actually. The first one's at Springbrook. This one will be um, we'll be putting this pump track in. We thought it would be our first pump track, because it's taken so dang long. Um but this will really be a great improvement for those kids that don't have, you know, really access to riding bikes and sidewalks in some of their neighborhood areas. So they'll be able to do that while they're playing on the playground. So uh one of the main uh features of this phase one was to do a loop trail from the main entry all the way down around the lake. Uh and then back. So the red notes that you see there now are bridges. So of course, one bridge will be spanning Wordslake, and then the other two bridges are already there, but they'll be enhanced so that you can get from one end of the park. To the other side. We're adding a dog park, and this was originally located more centrally located, but it does need to be ADA accessible. So we moved it up here, which will really be a great feature for the the families that live off of Eighty-Eighth Street. And they'll be able to have some parking there along the sidewalk, as well as there'll be some parking and um ADA access there to get into the dog park area. And of course, it's sort of meandering through the trees. Uh there are some trees that'll have to be um dealt with, because there's some. Dangerous trees in there that'll be dealt with, but other than that, it'll be a really natural area for uh people to to use and enjoy. So this is phase one cost summary, and so um. You can see that we've gotten a lot of different grant funding sources to uh make use of this, two point four, almost two and a half million dollars in. In funding, and so um the current cost estimate is three point nine million, so you can see it's a bit of a shortfall there as well. But as City Manager noted, there is uh carry forward funds and one-time funding that'll be utilized to cover the cost of this increase. Um and here you can just see some of the increased uh cost changes based on um. Changes in location, changes in requirements, permitting requirements, um buffers. You know, the great thing about Wordslake Park is there's three biomes there. You know, it's really a very specific natural area. We've got wetlands. We've got prairies, oak prair- oak prairies, and also old growth forests. So we're really being careful to move in and around those spaces and protect. That natural resource as best as we can. And then jumping just to phase two, because um while we've been waiting for phase one contracts, we were in the process of applying for grants for phase two. We brought this forward for council, and so phase two, um we were also very successful in getting grants for. And this is where we'll be doing improvements um uh to connect the phase one to phase two. So you really, you'll be able to start at um. The eighty-fourth street entrance and easily get down to Twenty-Fifth Avenue, which is at the bottom, but you'll be able to get through the park. And again, we do have challenges at Wordslake Park. It's a densely uh vegetated area that's near a freeway. It's near industrial areas. And uh right across from uh the freeway is Hosmer, which there's a lot of challenges on that part. And so we do get a lot of homelessness in this area. We get a lot of different kinds of negative activities that occur during the day. And so really bringing all these improvements to this neighborhood, limbing it up, opening it up, and making these areas accessible. Really, you know, you bring positive people to a space, and it really will change the use of the site, so we're really excited about that. Um that would be phase three, and it'll be a bit of a challenge, because the wetland goes right up to the edge and it's quite steep. But, you know, nothing's impossible, so um but we'll show you uh that phase three spot in just a second, but that's a potential, but it would be part of phase three. So do you wanna talk a little bit about the projects that we're doing for phase two, Stacy?
So for phase two, uh we're proposing a Portland Lou restroom at the main park entry, noted by the red arrow.
I think you heard about a Portland Lou a little earlier today from our city attorney, um and as we mentioned before, Portland Lou is kind of like a. Metal Santa Can. It's very, uh there's not a lot to it. Does all the things you need to do, but it's not the kind of place you can lock yourself into. It's not the place you're gonna wanna spend the night. It's not one of those places that um you can do a lot of damage to. Uh it's pretty. Bandover resistant, and so we're gonna be trying it here at this park, and hopefully it'll be a success for us, so that we can maybe utilize those in other park places. The restroom that's here now is completely unusable. Fancy Santa Can. Yeah, well, that's, you know, it's connected to a sewer. It's a public facility.
So what i- is, is, is that fully plumbed on sewer?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not.
There's sewer there now, because we do have a restroom building. It's just not usable.
And it's less than the one point seven million dollars that they spent on one at San Francisco.
Correct, yeah, yay.
Uh two new shelters noted by the arrow are gonna be installed off the main entry on off Eighty-Fourth. Some trail improvements, um as Mary just spoke about, spanning from phase one. There's quite a slope change as you are. In the lower main park area, there's a significant wooded slope. Um there'll be a trail connection to. Uh that upper slope where a BMX track will be installed. It's about three and a half acres. There's a new neighborhood park um with parking that's gonna uh serve that BMX trail, as well as the neighbors. Um on that upper slope on the backside of the park. Um it'll increase parking and um have a a neighborhood play, two neighborhood play areas. One, both of the new neighborhood park, um the existing one off Eighty-Fourth and the new park.
The great thing about the changes that we're doing is we're really creating a great diversity of recreation. We have this great natural space, wonderful places to hike. Family places to visit, BMX bike track, where, which is located in an area used to have a house there and an old church there, and it's all really disturbed area. So we're not doing, and a lot of uh there were houses there, and we've had a lot of cleanups of camps, so it's really kind of an already disturbed area, so that'll be a great use. And then we're really going with, you're gonna see this nature play. We're not gonna be putting in traditional playgrounds like we see it at some of our other parks. We're really gonna take. A look at these nature planes. They're built, they're not just old trees with stumps in it. They're really built to sustain use and. To really kind of bring back that natural area. It can be great for educational purposes and just to kind of reconnect people with nature.
So the project's schedule, as we um mentioned briefly, that phase one is currently in permitting. And we've had quite a bit of a delay um meeting um all the design and and grant needs for that. And in the meantime, have um been awarded or tentatively awarded uh grants for phase two. And that has an expedited design, uh hopefully scheduled for this year. And with that thought, uh putting a pause on phase one um construction and combining that with phase two. So an expedited um phase two design, and then both phase one and phase two as a singular construction project. Which would uh be scheduled May twenty twenty-four to February twenty twenty-five.
The benefit of doing that is, of course, less impact on the people that are using the park. Uh not getting a new park started and then having to tell everybody to stop as we redo construction. It's also more efficient for just construction, mobilization, uh connecting from here to there. You really have a co- a continuous program. And uh it's less impact on the site as well.
Yeah, good, thank you. I I I would just say that this slide. Along with the previous one about the that, with with the funding and where this is. That this timeline suggests that if, as the ARPA process plays out. And some ARPA funds become unused, the uh this this contract period. Lends itself to committing some, any remaining ARPA funds that need to be committed to something, to something. And given that this is one of the neighborhoods that at the very beginning of the ARPA process, we said we wanted to focus on. Um you know, that that, so this becomes a. A a place that we'll be able to invest the the last. Segments of our ARPA dollars if there, if if some become left or get unspent by some other projects. Um this timeline works that way.
Agreed, and rather using, as we have discussed, ad nauseam for capital facilities and. Peanut butter spreading it for social services.
Um so this uh council member Anderson, you can see here, we have our phase three, which is the acquisition project. Again, another. Project that's taken an awful lot longer than we anticipated. Um we started off, the little part at the bottom, we were able to purchase really quickly during COVID. The rest of it has been quite complicated. We initially thought it was gonna be a uh boundary line adjustment, and it ends up being a binding site plan. Which that's new to all of us, and the city doesn't do a lot of binding site plans, because they're temp- they're very complicated, so we've had to go through a lot of hoops for that. Um I think we noted in a previous document, my, that. Um we initially were gonna be utilizing conservation futures funds for this property purchase, but. Because of the delay and the timing for conservation futures, they did extend, gave us a bit of an extension, but we were not able to utilize those funds for this, so. It was twenty-seven thousand and some change. Yes, sir.
Uh did you explore a conservation easement with the right to use it for a park? As that would be, then the square footage would remain in the ownership of the. The development, so they could use that square footage as uh for entitlements. And it's less expensive than appraisal-wise than buying a property, and there's an opportunity for him to even donate some of it, so.
We did, and that wasn't um, first of all, the amount of land that's being used because of the nature of the. It's all wetlanded. We're buying swampland in Florida, basically. Um they are not able to utilize it anyway as part of their. Entitlements, or as you said, the development, so we did check on that, and that isn't gonna be a restrictive use for them at all. Um they weren't interested in the conservation easement. I think they were either you, it's ours or it's yours, and so that's the direction that we went. But I have to say, um because of the nature of the binding site plan, there's just been so many different. Because all of the owners, there's not just one owner to that area. There's several different property owners with like Discount Tire and that little place that used to be the ferry store. And it's, I think, a dental clinic now. It's just been very difficult, because they all share the parking lot. There's, there's just a lot of pieces to the puzzle. So anyway, the great part is, is it's actually in permitting now. Everybody's approved everything, so we will be buying this property soon. And uh that is where we would then be able to have that, that access, council member Anderson, to do any kind of future connections. One of the connections will be on the northern side of the property, where we currently kind of stop where the bridge is gonna start. And there's clearly access up to the backside of that parking lot, just out of, from pedestrian use. And so we'll be able to open that area up, put in some, you know, wooden type stairs, just to still have it be natural, but to make it much safer and easier to use. And take away some of the little hiding areas that are back there. So uh that should be uh happening here in the middle of this year. So um kind of what's happening with the project, or what we'll be seeing, you'll be seeing on your upcoming council agenda, is is that one of the things we'd like to do. Is um we're, we're gonna be asking council to authorize the city manager to purchase the restroom for American Lake Park. Um and some other site furnishings throughout this process, we can do it by owner. And the reason for that is, is that we can buy it on the state contract or through our purchasing uh cooperatives. We um can get those, we don't have to pay for the markup, and we don't have to um coordinate with the um. The contractor uh for. Delivery and transportation. We can buy those. Some of them take three to ten months to leadway for like some of the playground equipment, and for the restroom, it's ten months. So that we don't have to wait till we're ready to bid it out and then order it. We can do that now, and it does save the city a significant amount of money. So we'll be asking council to authorize city manager to purchase the restroom now uh for American Lake Park. And then some of the other site furnishings as they come along, like the the shelter kits. Now, the in, the contractor will be preparing the services and doing the installation, so that's not gonna, that won't, that will be part of the contract, but will be significantly. Uh less expensive to purchase these items than to have them purchase it, and then again, it's a big delay. So that'll be coming up next time. We'll be looking at um. We talked a little bit about here already about the consolidation. So here we'll be looking at a Wordslake contract amendment. And that'll be to deal with some of these scope changes for phase one, and then we'll be asking council to approve a contract for the design of phase two. Um the master plan level that we are looking at was really helped created for the grant application process. We were able to get those funds. So we'll be looking at doing designs, so we can actually get moving and doing the construction drawings to get that moving forward. We'll be looking at a contract amendment for Bob Droll and Associates. They're doing the American Lake Park to deal with the plaza and. The uh the compactor and some of the other additions that we added to the project, so there'll be a contract amendment for his work. And then again, we talked about the restroom site furnishing, so you'll be seeing several things coming on your March sixth council agenda. That'll be dealing with the things that we talked about today. So that's that.
So it's nice to see you with a extra three and a half million dollars of love.
The great thing is that we did so much great estimating for phase two, is that I think the phase two is gonna be right on, right? I don't think we're gonna come back with that part, that problem, but the the phase one, it's, you know, what we've talked about in two thousand and nineteen, and it's twenty twenty-three. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's probably less than it could be, but more than we expected, so.
Yeah. Yeah, right, exactly.
Fingers crossed.
When it's all done, it'll be beautiful, so hopefully folks will enjoy it and and appreciate it.
It'll right, it'll make a big na- um impact on that neighborhood, on that east side. It really will change things, and um I think it'll be really cool for the community.
Very good, well, thank you. That uh. Includes the items we have for matters for discussion tonight. Those items tentatively scheduled for the next regular city council meeting on March sixth are listed. Those items tentatively scheduled for the next regular city council meeting on March sixth are listed on your agendas for tonight. And we can now turn to Mr. Caulfield for his reports for the evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Just a handful of updates. I want to start off with our sister city delegation visit to Gimhee in the Republic of Korea. So we're looking at, for those who are attending, we're gonna be going on the trip. We're looking at leaving on Wednesday, May eighth at eleven in the morning. And then we would arrive in Gimhee the following day, Thursday, May fourth at six P M. Because they're seventeen hours ahead and it's a fourteen hour plane ride. And then that would put us in a nice position to be able to participate in their art and cultural event on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So then the question becomes, when do we return? So if we stay for the closing ceremony late on Sunday, we would then have to come back on Monday. We would leave Korea at four thirty in the afternoon on Monday. We'll be back here in the States at one P M on Monday. And again, because we'll be going the other way, so we gain a day. Well, I'll get to that. However, you could, we could also perhaps not attend the closing ceremonies. I know the city clerk is reaching out to her colleagues there to see what that encompasses. And we could be back on Sunday. But even if we came back on Sunday or Monday, you know, if the council was so inclined, I mean, you could cancel your May eighth. It's a study session meeting. So I just wanted to, oh, actually, yeah, you could, you could, yeah, you could do that. Yeah. So. But more to come on that. Just wanted to, for those of you who are gonna be, who are gonna be going. Wanted to report that last week, once again, the city was recognized with, by A W C as a well city. And I wanna offer congratulations to our H R analyst, Tracy Freeman, who leads our wellness committee and of course, all those in our wellness community for helping facilitate a healthy lifestyle and all the events for our city employees. And of course, there is a monetary value of that and that we get a two percent reduction in our medical premiums for two thousand twenty-four. Since we've been a well city for a number of years now, we've been achieving that on an, on an annual basis. But it is no small task. It does take a, 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 an amount of energy and effort on our wellness committee. And of course, the leadership of Ms. Ms. Freeman. As you know, private investment here in the city has been going very, very well for a number of years, particularly going back to two thousand eighteen, when at the time, we had an all time high of a hundred and twenty-six million dollars in investment. In two thousand nineteen, if I recall, it was a hundred and fifty-seven million. And then in twenty twenty, it was eighty-eight million. And then last year, two thousand twenty-one, was an all time high of a hundred and sixty-three million. In two thousand twenty-two, our new, the, the number is closer to ninety million, which is on par kind of where we were in twenty twenty. And while it is a decrease from twenty twenty-one, it's still four or five times the average of what we had averaged, you know, the first twenty years of incorporation or so. And private investment continues to be driven by commercial, including industrial, as well as a wide range of housing. And not just single family, but also medium density and high density and the multifamily. And more to, more is expected to come down that, down that road as well. And so that trend is expected to continue into twenty twenty-three. And even though we are seeing a slowdown in the kind of the private sector, we expect the new construction to be offset by a lot of the work that's happening over at Western State Hospital, not just beginning in twenty twenty-three, but for the next four or five years after, after that. Last week, you know, the city council, you had a presentation or, you know, just kind of an update on where we were with ARPA. One of the, one of the applications was from Springbrook Connections. And I know one of the questions was, you know, you know, what's their, you know, are they a registered five oh one C three? Or are they being, you know, essentially managed by some type of a fiscal agent? It is the former. They are a bona fide five oh one C three. Their request for ARPA funds, which came in during the first process, the application process, where you sought folks to apply for ARPA funds, is for fifty thousand dollars to cover their lease payments. They're looking to lease a portion of the Center Force Building over in Springbrook. And the purpose of that is to, for them to create a family resource center and in partnership with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. So the question for the council is, you know, would you like us to bring that back for your review and consideration? And the reason I bring it up is because they're looking to have the money secured by next month, which is our understanding, their first month of them being able to rent that facility. So I just wanted, Mayor, just wanted to put that on the, on the table for you and the, for you and for you and the council. Some good news to report as well. Kite Realty are good friends across the street, who, who merged with the previous owner, R P A I, bought them out, however you want to look at it. They have chosen Legacy Partners, which is a regional developer, mixed use developer out of the King County Seattle area for a new mixed use project in the downtown, essentially the ten acres that resides behind Target. And we also believe that that might also include the Barnes and Noble building as, 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 as well. So the next steps is for Legacy Partners to actually secure ownership of that property from Kite Realty. And then they're looking to essentially build a ninety thousand square foot development, which would be comprised of three hundred, at least three hundred and fifty housing units, and then also some commercial space and uses as, as well. We also continue to be in discussion with Kite Realty about incorporating an urban park as part of that development. And that's a conversation we'll be having with Legacy Partners. But again, you know, it's interesting, you know, we're, you know, I just mentioned, you know, the private investment that's coming into the city and it's all coming from outside the city. And, you know, folks are being attracted to Lakewood because of who and what we are and what we have to offer. So that's some good news. Also, as a part of that, you know, we have the tax income and financing tool. And I'm gonna be recommending to the council that, you know, we undertake a, you know, project level analysis to see if that's a tool that could be used to help support this project, as well as perhaps the urban park. I don't know, have an answer on that. Don't want to get out ahead of anybody on that. But so I'll be coming back to you probably later this spring or summer on that. Once Legacy Partners fully acquires the property and they have an idea of specifically what they're gonna build on that site. Also, as a part of that, I had mentioned to you last week that we're looking for a home for the senior activity center. And actually, Kite Realty has a space, a vacant space of about forty-five hundred square feet, right next to Lane Bryant. Kind of a centrally located and actually close to a bus line as well as a transit center. And so we're gonna reach out to them and to see if that would be a possible opportunity to be able to use that as a storefront for a senior center for, you know, the next four or five years, until we can find a definitive answer, whether it's in partnership with Pierce County down at the Lakewood Community Center or in partnership with the library, depending upon what they ultimately decide to do. And hopefully they'll have an answer on that sometime later this year. As I reported last week, we are pursuing a raise grant, a federal grant in support of the downtown transportation network, AKA the Green Loop Street. So we hit the send button late last week to request funding totaling eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As I reported last week, we had a lot of support in the, from the community. I think we had thirteen or fourteen support letters, as well as we did receive also support letters specifically and signed by our elected federal representatives. And those went directly to the Wash, I'm sorry, to the U S D O T Secretary. So we should know, I think the timeline is later this summer, early fall, whether or not we received the funding. So more, more to come on, on that. And kind of on the federal legislative side, and I know council member Anderson and I have been talking about this. You know, we were fortunate last year that our federal delegation provided some language in the N D A A to help us with the facilitation of the acquisition of the North Clear Zone. And so, you know, that language does have the possibility to be helpful. But I think we need some assistance from Army and Air Force, as well as our federal delegation to kind of move that forward. And I know Councilmember Anderson is gonna be attending A D C next week. And he'll be reaching out on behalf of the city and S S M C P with some of our partners in the Pentagon to see what they can do to help. And then likewise, we'll also be reaching out to the federal delegation at the staff level to begin that conversation. So just wanted to give you a heads up. You know, one of the challenges we had is late last year, we had an opportunity to acquire some property. But, you know, the private sector moves a whole lot faster than the government sector. And so we're looking for a way to kind of just move things along a little bit more effectively and efficiently. So just wanted to give you a heads up and more, more to follow on that. And then lastly, just on your calendar, I learned this weekend that Habitat for Humanity is having their annual Changing Lives luncheon. And unfortunately, it's all sold out. And it's Wednesday, this Wednesday, March first, from noon to one. And we're a great partner with them. And then, of course, on Friday evening, we have the gala event in honor of Dr. Claudia Thomas at the McGavick Center. And then later on in the month, on March eighteenth, the twenty-ninth Legislative District Representative, specifically Senator Conway and Representative Mena, are gonna be holding a town hall meeting, legislative update in Tacoma at the local thirty-one firefighters hall from ten to noon. I believe that's a Saturday, March eighteenth. So with that, that's my report.
So we'll now kind of finalize the evening with council comments. Mr. Branser, we'll start with you tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I did attend the session at Harrison Prep that was held by the the library system and in, in their county council member Hition. That about thirty folks from the community attended. There were the, the focus on, on, on most of the questions had to do with the timelines for getting the temporary library operated. And really, what would its capabilities be like? The, the library system spoke about where they were in the process, but were, didn't want to commit firmly to a timeline of completing, when they would have everything done and also everything in place to actually open it. But spoken some in terms of that it might be in early twenty twenty-four or late twenty twenty-three. And most of the comments from the community around that, but were acceptable of that, of that timeline. And there's also some comments that were favorable about the interim pop-up activities at the library. The, with regards to a, to a permanent library, that they still refer to that where the library trustees are in their process about what is their preferred alternative being going forward. But it was more or less inferred that the, it looks like the, the, the alternative that they're really interested in seeing if it's going to pencil out is to demolish the current library, but then build something on site. Perhaps a, 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 a two or a two and a half story structure with, with some, some parking, being able to, to go and do that. But they were very clear of saying that it would be very dependent upon the community voting for the funding via a bond levy matter to do that. And that they also talked about, once they actually had a plan in place to present to the public, that it's probably an eighteen month or two year process to inform people about the plan leading up to an actual ballot vote. So it would get us into the, the twenty twenty-six window of where you do that with getting it done with another than a two year construction cycle to go on. So we're really talking twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight at the earliest of looking at a library that was designed and funded in that manner to do that. And there, and there was some discussion about could this project be combined with some projects elsewhere in the library district? So that the a, a, a funding package for multiple facilities could be put on a ballot in a larger geographic footprint. That was just voiced. It wasn't talked about in, in terms of, of it being the plan or that, the, the most, most likely plan was referred to is that they're looking to do earlier than that, a similar plan in Sumner to have a vote that just has to do with what they consider to be the footprint of the Sumner Library, which is a group of unincorporated areas in the city of Sumner and some other things to do that. And the other thing is, is that this Friday, I'm going to be attending the SHAPE Executive Council Meeting in, as the alternate to Councilmember Bokey.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say that they're really great and informative presentations tonight. So I really like that about, especially about the parks and hearing all of those new improvements that will be coming. And also that I will be at the event on Friday, looking forward to supporting you and the community there. And I will see you all tomorrow.
I gotta remind you about that. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. As City Manager mentioned, I'll, I'll be going back to D C. Actually, it's a, it's a, it's a three for the, the county has agreed to fund my trips as an A D C board member. They don't know at A D C whether I represent Lakewood or Pierce County, so they put them both down. And, and I'm gonna be making a pitch for S S M C P to, uh, some members of the Congressional Delegation Staff and, and some folks from inside the Pentagon. The bad part is, most of the board members are from the Southeast or Eastern Seaboard. And so our first board meeting is at three thirty on Sunday, which means that I have to go on Saturday. Because I can't get there in time otherwise. So I'm gonna have brunch with an old friend on Sunday morning. But I will not be here next Monday because it runs through Wednesday.
Excellent. Okay, very good. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I apologize for being late. I couldn't get out of my gate. Had to take the long route around. So took a little extra longer. So I apologize for that. On Saturday, I did attend the Asian Pacific Cultural Lunar New Year. It was absolutely wonderful. And they'd even outgrown the dome. They were standing room all anywhere. Seats were all full. But it was awesome. Yeah, very good. So, see, I hope you guys are committed to have a good time because I have some surprises for you guys. And you'll notice it as you enter.
Great.
Yeah, so I'm excited. And we have far exceeded our expectation. We started at a hundred, we moved to one fifty, and we up to one sixty-eight and probably one seventy. So the turnout has been absolutely wonderful. So thank you guys for supporting.
Well, thank you. We'll turn about spare play. So I will see you on Friday. And I hope all of you are gonna be at Rotary's big function on March twenty-fourth, which is a Friday. And it's the Lakewood Wine and Beer Fest to raise funds for the great children here in the community of Lakewood. I think we've already got a hundred and fifty tickets sold on that already. So we need to get about four hundred is our target on that event. So put that on your calendar and invite your friends, March twenty-fourth, the Friday. Six to about nine thirty. Yep, should be some great fun to be had. Lots of good community people. Presentations tonight were great. Really appreciate the park updates. Sticker shock is something I'm getting used to after sixteen years in government, or at least thirteen plus years in government. But we'll, we'll make it through. Good projects for the community for sure. And I look forward to the Friday event. For L M C C. Thank you for putting that together. Absolutely. Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to say congratulations on winning the. I just wanted to say congratulations on the, uh, winning the wellness, uh, award again this year. So good job.
Absolutely. Those savings will go to the parks projects, I'm sure. So. All right. Uh, any further ado, no further alibis. We're adjourned.